Bye, Jim.
Good night.
All right, so are we going to talk about Resolution 2015-4? Or are we going to not talk about it?
I think the mail saying that that was not going to be discussed before.
No, it was my suggestion. Certainly Council has to decide on that.
We right now, what's the appropriate language that we use? We...
We approve the appropriation at this level?
Yeah, actually in our packets we got 03F, which has already been approved. But the item to be discussed was tabled to a future date?
Postponed.
Postponed. I knew I had the wrong words, that's why.
Postponed. No, this was, I never looked at the discussion on it. I wanted this one to look at, but...
So if they didn't want to, anyone ever consider that, number four? Since it's postponed, would it come back?
It has to reappear on the next meeting agenda because it was postponed to that date. If Council so desired to get rid of it, at the beginning of the meeting you could amend the agenda to remove it, or you could wait till it comes back before you at the regular appointed time and postpone it indefinitely. My suggestion would be to let it come back before you and postpone it indefinitely.
If we decide not to.
If we decide not to postpone.
If that's Council's wish to kill it.
If Yvonne sent an email that suggested that we might want to, correct?
Correct. You know, I didn't know how much time we should spend on this. It just didn't seem to be understood. It was really...
If this is procedurally how we're operating and somebody doesn't, I'd like, I'm always a fan of documenting what we do because when someone comes in for an audit and they look at it and they say, hey, you're operating this way, and we, or they say, you say you're operating this way, and they find something different than that, that's not always all that good. And if we're operating this way, I think it's good for...
The other concern I have is, and I think it's in a good place, of just the perception that we have brought something forth, and for it to just be erased without letting the public know, it could look, have the appearance that like there was something wrong.
Well, Maria wanted to, she didn't want to vote on it, she wanted to talk about it some more, and I think if we just dismiss it, we don't give further right to talk about it.
Well, I received a message from Ms. Kovat, and I just didn't bring the papers here because I assumed that was not going to be discussed any further.
Well, I think her email...
The main objection that I had was it was not explicit enough of what it was supposed to do for it, and I had put a call into the auditor booth house there. I'm expecting a phone call back. I have not received it yet. I had gone through the different procedures that they have on their website, and I just want to further ask whether or not if we have something that would aid the definition of it. The way it's written there seems very murky to me.
And it came from the auditors' office.
It seems, yeah, and it seems very murky. It does not seem clear to me. It wasn't seem clear to probably to other people, so that's the way I would like to have it, have a little bit of clarity on that.
I don't know, when we get into editing what the auditor is putting out, though, how much that's a bit of a deal.
Well, that's what I was waiting for, a phone call from there. I couldn't go to Columbus because I couldn't.
Right, well, I understand.
I put a call there and I'm just waiting for them to call me back.
And I have no problem with questioning it. I just wouldn't want it, again, right now we thought we were following the procedure based on what the auditor has laid forth, and for us to just act like, whoops, sorry, we're not proceeding with this, when the last time we had a televised, you know, meeting, it looked like we were going to discuss it. I'm a little, I'm a little less comfortable just acting like it didn't happen, because it would leave a question mark for somebody who's watching, well, was there something, you know, not right going on, when I don't think that was the case at all. So can we...
If I could come in?
Sure.
Well, the only thing I was going to say, one suggestion would be, even though it's a little more delayed, we could bring it up at the next work session as a place to discuss it.
And by then we have to see that Kovat and/or have gone to Columbus. I'm just, my objection, like I said, is murky as it is, and if I have a problem with it, other people may have some problems with it. I just need a little clearer definition.
What I'd recommend is, murky is a pretty broad term, so I...
Well, not clear.
No, let me, murky, or, can I just finish, please? Murky, not clear. I'm just saying that I would be very specific when we come prepared to discuss it, point by point, what you are identifying as murky, because that's a broad statement is all.
Okay, well, but I just would like something to state that exactly from line A, like, you know, it's going to be taken out to put into some other category, some more definition on where the money is going now and what we're going to do with that money, where it's going to. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, what we approve doesn't list the line items beneath...
Correct.
Right.
Right. So as a council, we approve the broad picture. It's not the broadest picture, but, and then that resolution is just saying that anything within these categories...
Can be moved around.
Can be moved around, which we don't see anywhere.
We don't see it, so we don't know what they are.
Yeah, but we don't see it to begin with.
Right, we never saw it.
Can I, tell me if this example, if my understanding is correct, on the street lighting permanent appropriation, the amount is $51,200. And let's just for example sake, say that 5,000 of that is for light bulbs and $46,200 is for electricity, for the electric bill. And if the light bulbs cost $200 more and the electricity costs $200 less, there would still be $51,200 appropriated, we would just spend it different within that very category.
Correct. I would just take 200 from the electricity and do it to the light bulbs.
And you would never come to us for that. The only way you'd come to us is if the light bulbs are $200 more and the electricity comes in the same amount, so you'd have $200.
For more money.
That used to have to come to us.
Right.
See, the thing that I was looking at, when you thought, Maria, we're not paid to micromanage the government. We pay these people to go ahead and manage that part of it, as far as the big overall scheme of things and how we make decisions. That's really important for us to make decisions upon, but then as little small things, why do we have them if we're going to be micromanaging?
I understand that you always trust them. I've always trusted them verified, and when I feel like something is clear to me or I can not make sense out of it, and it's money involved, I don't feel like I can vote for it.
But you did vote for it. You voted for it.
On the broader sense, because I thought that we were going to, on this particular listing here of appropriations, because I thought that we were going then to have a little bit more of a definition of what was going to be happening.
Did you want to...
Yeah, what I wanted to say is that I think at some point, I recall Matt had provided you with a copy of the Ohio Administrative Co. section where this is outlined. In addition to that, it's also stated in the village handbook put out by the State Auditor's Office. When we were writing it up, you read it and you think, oh my gosh, how can you make this sound a little bit better? But there are simply things like the term itself, level of control, that we can't mess with that. That is the official term of it.
Yeah, that's the state term.
But I think we tried to simplify it to the extent that we could, within reason, without changing what it actually was. So those would be your references if you want to look at it to see what it all means. And if anybody else would like a copy of that Ohio Administrative Co. section, Matt can get that to you.
What's our alternative? In other words, and Maria, maybe you can help me out with this, what's our alternative? I'm trying to understand, so are we saying that the language isn't in there that talks about moving light bulbs to electricity at that level?
I just, I just wanted a little more of explanation on that.
Okay.
To get to my comfort zone, let's put it that way.
Sure.
Otherwise I can't vote for it.
Well, you can vote, you just don't have to vote for it.
Maria, can we disagree not to change it? And if she doesn't vote for it or says no, that's fine. Let's just proceed, because to me, I think, if I'm not talking, the rest of you guys seem that everything's okay. I mean, because otherwise we're making a mountain out of a molehill, guys.
Which was my main reason for saying, just table it. I mean, it's some of the, in my opinion, it's a very minor point, and I can't see us spending a whole lot of time on it. Maybe that's just because of my workload and everything we're doing right now, I just didn't know how much time Council wanted to give to this, but it's...
So what changes if we table it? Is there anything that changes whatsoever?
We're just less precise in our procedures.
Just, we're doing everything exactly the same, it's just not this resolution one being documented of how we do it.
Documentation of how we handle.
Because this doesn't change how we do anything, it just documents how we do it.
So is that a Jeff, and I'm just asking, is that a Jeff Forbes question or is it auditor question saying, if we don't have this documentation that's verifying what we're doing, does that pose a problem?
I don't know that it does. Could it be in a management letter back to us?
I wouldn't think so, as long as it's just the described procedure that we follow, because we can have a set of controls that aren't necessarily resolutions, but we can have a policy on it or something like that. But it's something that is currently allowed under that OAC code, so if we really have to have something, then please do that.
So does that put us in a, sorry to pursue this, but does that put us in a more vague place than if we proceeded with it and it got approved?
I don't think so.
So my point is, if the document didn't change and we don't vote it in, we could be actually in a more ambiguous place than if we approved what is on the table or what we were considering. What do you guys, how do you want to handle it?
Well, it's tabled right now, or it's postponed, excuse me. I'm not doing that on purpose, I'm just a little slow on some of this stuff.
I know, but for a parliament here, I'm going to make sure.
I know, it's chock, fingernails on a chalkboard. Right, right now it's postponed to our next regular meeting.
Correct.
So when it comes up on the agenda, it's, it would be referred to me, and I have two options.
Two options.
I could either make a motion to postpone it indefinitely, or I could make a motion to pass it, get a second, have discussion, and have a vote, correct?
When it comes back to you, in order for it to get back on the floor, because I would have to check, it may already be on the floor, but let me check the minutes. If it is, it will come back to you for action. You have to do something with it.
Right.
At that point in time is when you would want to move, if you so wish, to move, to postpone it indefinitely. If that fails, it's, it's back before you in its original form, of which you can then discuss it and either vote it up or down. When it comes back to you and the motion to postpone it indefinitely, discussion can take place and it can go into the merits of that resolution itself.
What if I don't want to postpone it indefinitely? What if I just wanted to take action? What do I do?
Then you would just simply indicate, depending on whether it was moved and seconded, whether it's on the floor, and that information will be provided to you. You would go and discuss it and take the vote.
Okay. Yeah, my inclination right now is to see what, see what additional information Maria gets from the auditor's office, and then bring it up and see if we want to vote yes or no. Or, you know, if, and if we have discussion and Maria says, hey, there's more information I haven't gotten, or other people say I'm uncomfortable with it, then maybe we...
I guess maybe I'm struggling with what, why we're beating this to death when the auditor and the, and two different sources says this is the wording we need to use. And so, I mean, it's kind of...
Yeah, I don't see that either, but if, I want to give Maria an opportunity to get comfortable with it.
That's fine, that's fine, but, you know, we need to get there.
We'll be there in two weeks.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
Just a point of question clarification. Going forward, could our level of control be mentioned in the permanent appropriation? Just so that it's all together?
That means we have to do it every year.
Oh, we only have to do the level of control once?
One time, yeah.
Okay.
Well, how the appropriation is passed, that determines the level of control.
Okay.
So if you want it more in depth, I can do that, it is how you guys want it.
So...
But how it's passed originally, that sets it for that year.
So it should kind of be in that resolution, or it is in that resolution, it's just not written?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
So this isn't...
Pretty change, I guess.
2015-4F is not for all years going forward until we change it, it's just for this year?
I wouldn't do it this year, I just meant in the future.
I thought it was all, we told you years going forward.
Right, unless we change it.
Okay, all right, that was my understanding, okay.
I mean, I just thought it would be part of the statement, like, this is the appropriation, the level of control is X. Here it is, you know, but...
Going forward, I can do that in the appropriation part, but where, but this is, this is it here.
Right. Yeah, I was just, because I know when I was looking at them as two separate documents, it was confusing, but when I was looking at them side by side with the actual appropriations, it clicked for me, you know, that's when, because, I mean, this was an attachment to three, and then four was, but putting them next to each other, they definitely were tied together. So just not this year, but going forward, if we change the level of control maybe, mention it, or otherwise just state that this showed, I don't know, whatever the auditor and you guys are comfortable with it. Okay. If that makes sense.
All right, we can now, we're going to discuss the golf course contract.
What's that?
Golf course contract.
Was it put in committee?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think Yvonne just reported to us about it in the last meeting, and we said we'd discuss it in the next.
And do you want me to lead the discussion? Would you like to lead the discussion?
Go for it.
Are you sure?
I'm still writing down notes from the last thing, so...
Do you want us to wait a second?
No, no, that's okay.
Joel had asked, and Joel's here, so Joel's going to ask me to move up a little closer, so in case we have questions for you, or...
Or if you want to throw something at him.
If he wants to throw something at us. He asked for four adjustments to the contract. And let me set this up by saying, and then I'm going to set this up, I'm going to go through everything, and then I'm going to make sure that I got this correct in the eyes of Yvonne and Joel. In years prior to this year, not every expense that was incurred at the golf course was assigned to the golf course. For example, there's fuel needs for the golf course, and in the past, the service department just delivered some fuel there, 10 to 12 gallons at a time. And this year, we're making a more, a better effort at assigning the expenses to the golf course that are truly associated with the golf course. So Joel asked for four adjustments to the contract. One was to add $1,000 because fuel was later added as an expense category. Secondly, in the language it says all expenses approved by the village would be deducted from the monthly amount, he would like the expenses that be approved by both the village and the contractor be approved each month. In the past, we had put a portlet on the golf course, and there was a wide range of what was recorded as expenses for 2013 versus 2014. And so he would like it limited to three months of portlet payments, because that's a finite number. And then the last was all revenue on the schedule as required by the village charter be deposited within a couple of days of when it's received, rather than daily. It is difficult for their operations, and the Ohio revised code allows for deposits that aren't made daily, as long as they're below a certain number, and the golf course fits into that. So he's asked for those, those four changes. So do I have that correct, accurate? Are you in agreement?
Changes, yes.
So, so those are the four things that he's asked for, for changes. So do you want to comment as to your thoughts on those changes?
Can I ask a question before that? What of that list changed after the contract was agreed to and signed?
The contract's been agreed to, but am I correct that it has not been signed?
Right, it was agreed, it was agreed to, Council passed it, I signed it, sent it to, should have been signed, and...
He read through it and said, hey, I like these four changes.
Okay.
You know, it wasn't agreed to.
Well, we had a couple of meetings to review it, and...
Right, right, we agreed to these things and these things.
Yeah.
After that got altered, after we verbally, the three of us verbally understood it.
That's what I'm trying to understand, if there was a change.
Yeah, if we'd totally agreed to it, we'd have signed it already. You know, so yeah, so exactly right. That's what I understood, and again, if the three of us misunderstood each other, then so be it. So that's why I just want to make sure, it's beautiful that it's in writing.
Sure.
And so I just want to say, oops, this is not what I understood.
I mean, we're looking for the best situation for everybody. The one thing that is kind of lurking in my, back in my thinking is police officers that are not getting raises and certain things that are happening elsewhere in the village, where my understanding is, we had higher expectations of what the numbers were going to be last season, how many people are utilizing the golf course. It doesn't mean, you know, I think that we have to be aware of that, but I'm not, you know, we'll have to see how that fits into this or not, because I'm sure there's people that would say, why are we investing in the golf course when there's other things that might be considered in some people's eyes more crucial? So we have to keep that in mind, I think.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
And I would say, my biggest issue is really, I mean, it's not the golf course or, you know, those kinds of things. I'm looking at the big picture for our overall budget, and I'm extremely concerned. So my biggest issue is the additional money. I, you know, perhaps it's something we could revisit later in the year, when a lot of things are going to be changing over the next few months for us financially, and I think we shouldn't spend a single dollar more.
Okay, then I would be fine, it's like, I'm not in trouble.
Oh, that's...
Okay, yeah, I would be fine. Go ahead and keep the $1,000 for the fuel. We'll add the fuel to the list of categories. But the other three things, if that's what you're not most concerned about, those would be the things I would be most concerned about. I would say I'm least concerned about, $1,000 out of our $5 million budget. That's the thing I'm least concerned about. But we have about $8,000 according to this, you know, to run the golf course. And if we're going to have certain categories varying by one or two or $3,000, that we, again, have gotten surprised by in the past, which we fully understand is, we're all getting surprised by these things, as we've gotten more picky about it, so we, you know, there's nothing against Madder, Yvonne, or Brenda, or anybody. But those other three things are what I'm more concerned about, to make sure that first of all, again, we know how much the rumpie bill would be to the golf course, because under this agreement, it reduces the amount to Suggs Properties, every little dollar. So we are very concerned about $1,000 out of our $8,000 budget to run the golf course outside what goes to us eventually. So I would say I'm more concerned about those three. The little rumpie bill for the restroom facilities, the daily basis, you know, we've worked that out very clearly.
I think the last issue is...
And then, and then the, and then the third one on there is that we want to be able to approve every dollar out of that $32,000 that the village is spending on the golf course. We just simply want to have a little initials audit.
I'm not sure I understand, and it could be misunderstanding my part. Madder, I don't see us going to the lawn mowing service and saying, hey, approve. I'm trying to get this a little thing.
It's a little different.
Yeah, I think this is a little different. If Suggs Properties run the golf course and there are, there's a contract amount, and that amount is reduced by expenses, and what's left is money that Suggs Properties uses to pay labor, to pay insurance, taxes, profit, all those things. If, if we say, eh, the rumpie bill was $5,000 this month, and he has no opportunity to say...
So it's a variable cost of expense.
Yeah, then, I mean, we could make his, not that we would do this, but if he doesn't have an opportunity to approve the expenses that are deducted from the fee schedule that we pay him each month, we essentially would pay him nothing all year if we load up a bunch of expenses.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that you're not sure what you're going to end up with. I understand.
What would the portlet cost for those particular portlets that are behind the golf course for the year?
$1,747.
For the year?
To the golf course.
Okay.
The previous year it was 124 or something. The previous year it was 276.
276, so you went up $1,500.
Right.
What's the monthly, do you know what the monthly charge is for a portlet?
I believe it's just over $100.
Yeah, we got it all worked out. All three of us are very much on the exact same page of what that is. So Greg, we understand that, we don't have to worry about that.
No, I'm just trying to think of, because you were saying that's those three, that's the expenses in the portlet, that's where you want to get a grasp of. I don't know why did it go up $1,500 bucks from the previous year I had.
No, we understood why, it was just a little difference in error, not in errors.
Accounting differences.
In accounting, exactly, between Kim and Matt and Yvonne and me, all of us.
And Yvonne and handicap.
Right, and I think, Matt and I look back in our notes, and I think that's what we had agreed to.
Are those required to be in place the entire year?
No, we figured that out too.
Right.
We agreed to, did you say we, you look, when you look back in your notes?
Yeah, it didn't, we look back, and we had agreed in, in our discussions that that would be the charge. It might not be stated there, but I, you know, I mean, some of it is, I don't think, you're making the assumption that we're going to be recklessly charging things against the golf course.
No, no, we're not.
And we're not going to be doing that. And I don't think there's any issue, and again, I thought Matt and Joel had agreed that you would on a monthly basis review the potential charges to the golf course. I don't think we can give you a flat out yes or no, because that's, we have to take care of the village budget, and if he doesn't like a charge that we feel does the golf course, I do think we need to be the type of ones that say, that's a golf course charge. I don't know how we can relinquish that to someone else.
I, it makes sense to me, and I can see both sides of it. I think that...
I mean, every indication, we're in work with, and we have every reason to work together on this, so...
Okay, you know, here, what, hold on a second. Okay, you know, here, what, hold on a second, Jeff. Right now, I was asking a simple question because it's just like a person just coming in off the street and you're talking about something totally new. And you, and all of a sudden, right away, you guys are saying, oh, we've already talked about all that. Then I don't know, understand why the expenses in the portlet and revenue is such a big deal if you guys talked about this so much. Because you, you, you want us to sit there and have a work session and talk about it, but all of a sudden, we, we can't talk about it.
I, I don't think anybody's telling you not to talk about it, but...
No, but I was just trying to understand what this was, seventeen and all, and you're saying, well, we already talked about it, it's accounting stuff. So, all right, great. So if it's three months that he's looking for just to pay and then the other, what, nine months? It's out there?
No, it's not out there in January and February and March.
That's, I mean, well, we don't know nothing about what's, what's wrong with that.
I think we did leave them year round, oh, I can't remember if that was last season. Oh, but we've decided that we're not gonna do that anymore, so...
Okay, do they empty it once a month or once a week?
Uh, during the season, I, I'm not sure. I would guess...
Just charge monthly, but you don't even know if they come once a week or once every two weeks to empty it? Okay. Because, you know, you know, out of traffic, I wouldn't think it'd be filled up.
Right, not during the winter and I think that's why...
Well, even during the summer.
I can't do that anymore.
I wouldn't think, in a week's time, if you got two of them. Okay, but, and then what, the expenses, when you, that's portlet, but the expenses, what are you talking about, the expenses? That's what I don't understand.
Um, well, like chemicals and...
Okay, gotcha.
Those kinds of things.
All right.
They're listed in there.
And so basically, last year, what are the expenses, the chemicals, we paid for, Green Hills did?
Correct.
Okay, and then so right now, the expenses would come out of his?
Right, if you remember, we went to like a little, some, or the golf course where we can be sure that would be what we'd have to have under the golf course for this year.
Okay.
And then, you know, as we explained to Joel, it was a, you know, that's a, a, the figure that we were looking at was approximately eight thousand dollars and that's why we keep referring to that figure and the remainder would go to SUGS Properties. The, um, monthly expenses, we saw them in there as the veritization, memberships, uh, no, golf memberships, not, not people joining golf, but like joining the USGA kind of thing.
GCG.
Um, chemicals, vehicle, equipment maintenance, fuel, utilities, insurance, portlet and other costs associated with the operation of the golf course.
Okay.
So, that's in the contract.
Right now, we have a dollar amount. We pay the expenses and then give him the remaining, remainder, right?
Right.
Okay, cause in my mind, I thought it was, we give him and he pays the expenses, but that's not how it works.
Yeah.
How is it the same state, same?
Okay, really very different.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we pay them, they totally operate. Uh, and what we do is we have a schedule of payment and then for that dollar amount, uh, we would deduct the, uh, monthly expenses.
But I can understand if you're working on eight thousand dollars, um, and you don't know what you're up against, you have no idea where you would be at the end of the season, if I'm understanding it correctly, so... All right, those, those expenses from our standpoint, like, let me get this right. So your chemicals or whatever you need down there to operate the golf course, the invoice comes into the village office, they pay it and then writing out the plan then is to expense those back to you. So do you have ultimate control of what's ordered versus us ordering it and you're just receiving the bill?
He would be the one to order it.
He does purchase, uh, does our requisition process, which come up here for people.
And is that, is that something that you know is fixed or is that, you're not sure what you're up against or?
The dog.
Joel, I'm asking you.
All right, I understand.
Okay.
I didn't understand the question, I'm trying to figure it out.
Your expenses, are they fixed? Do you know how much chemicals you're gonna need?
It, it varies upon the weather, upon the, the, uh, the rain, the weather, the heat, the diseases that come in that year. So there's, again, we can tell you confidently that the village paid seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars in two thousand and thirteen to these various vendors. Last year, the village paid nine thousand six hundred and forty-five to those various vendors. So there's a variance there because of business.
When we're talking vendors, meaning...
Everybody to run the golf course except SUGS Properties.
Right.
To do all these chemicals, all these, so we got it from seventeen thousand in two thousand and thirteen to ninety-six hundred last year. We hope to keep it to about eight thousand this year. And then the other twenty-four thousand out of that SUGS Properties bill that the village is incurring would, we would use to pay all our seven people and all their help.
Sure.
Which is totally off of y'all's books, that's off the village. So we think, and we're open to, we may have to spend ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen thousand out of that thirty-two thousand, I'm answering your question, but it said Joel, is it fixed or is it variable? It's gonna tend to, it's inflated.
And do we have history, like the past fourteen years, um, what expenses were, I mean, do we, do we know how they tracked in the past?
Um, I don't think we have that detailed.
Okay.
Right. And it's been hard, as, as Yvonne has beautifully explained to me that when Charlie's down there and he goes and he helps with the snow removal, it's been very hard to parse it out.
Right.
And they've done the best job they can to help me understand it, Kim and Yvonne and Matt. So, and that's why I said, I can handle this for us, for the village. And I'm gonna parse it out so I can make sure and so it's been beautiful, what they've done to help me learn that and I've helped them learn about too, so we can separate it out. That's why we wrote this book, it's a book to, to know.
As, as far as the point, the, the number three, uh, where you're asking for expenses approved by the consultant in the village, isn't the requisition essentially your, your, your approval?
Exactly, that's a beautiful question, Mr. Lee, exactly. But in the past, there have even been, again, like when Jeff and Greg were helping us so much to get Yvonne when we first took over, Askren, they would show up with plywood for the beautiful work they did and the beautiful painting they did and I, you know, and I was new at it, so I thought, oh, that's cool, we got that done. But then later in the year, I started thinking, now hold it, who paid for that? I thought it might've been out of their own pockets, I'm thinking, am I gonna get a bill for this? You know, I mean, is the village paying for it, did it get charged to the golf? So what I started realizing was that there were several people associated with the village that were essentially, you know, doing things for the golf course with funds that would be charged to the golf course. And that's when, again, I spoke to Yvonne.
So you received a bill for it?
And she said, no, let me finish there. And so I spoke to Yvonne about that, she said, yeah, it's kinda hard, Joel, to figure out who's working. Mike Castor might do some work, you know, and he had to run the NAPA, he had a part, the dude helped us with the, the golf course. And so that's when I started saying, yeah, let's figure this out between Kim and Matt and Yvonne and I. And we got it figured out beautifully. And so, yeah, if, if indeed now we say that the only people or that every dollar that'll get spent for the golf course will be approved by the village and the contractor, then we know for sure, yeah. I know for sure every dollar's getting spent. Yvonne and Matt know every dollar that's getting spent is getting spent essentially by the three of us.
Has the, um...
And the purchase requisition is working beautifully. But I wanna make sure no one else does things that surprise me.
Greg requisitioning something and you getting the bill for it and you say, I, I never wanted to do that.
So that, I think that answers the question. Well, that's a very adroit question, that's the exact gist of what I'm asking.
Well, and I guess I have a question, um, would, uh, has things been purchased that have not been through the requisition process? Do you, you know, has that ever been abused in any form?
I wouldn't say abused, there have been times when I've forgotten.
Not according to policy, not according to policy.
Yeah, when I, absolutely, Kim says, oh, we got this bill, or Matt says, oh, yeah, I forgot to fill out the purchase requisition. I called NAPA or I called Toro Century and ordered something because we were needing it. The water is coming up out of the ground, you know, and I thought, oh, I didn't fill out the purchase requisition. So those are the times, but that rumpkey thing is one example of, oops. You know, we, we didn't know that the golf course was getting...
Yeah, and I didn't mean to use the word abused, I meant, I meant, I'm just trying to find out how it's flowing, what the source is. Um, I feel like I personally am committed, we've, we're dedicated to the golf course for another year. Um, and the idea isn't to lead anybody to death, but also the backdrop too, though, is when we first initially, you know, started to work together, there was really pretty high hopes on the performance of the golf course that have not been matched. Um, and I, I'm sure there's lots of factors with that. So, you know, when we did the first year, which was a fair amount of money, um, you know, we hoped more, that there'd be more happening and for whatever reason it's not. So that makes it, makes it tougher from a financial perspective. But where do we wanna go from here?
Let me just say that in terms of, however you described it there, in terms of there were high expectations and they've not been met, okay? Let me just tell you that a few years ago, and Yvonne had already started reducing the expenses down there before we came online. So they were up around six figures expense-wise, uh, maybe four, five, six years ago. We just took over two years ago. So they were already starting to go down, they were around sixty or seventy or eighty thousand expense-wise. Now we're talking thirty-two thousand last year, forty-two thousand this year, and we're talking thirty-two thousand this coming year. So I think in terms of reducing expenses, we have factually reduced expenses between Yvonne, Kim, Matt, Mike Castor, Charlie, us. We have been reduced expenses over the last five or six years by about fifty or sixty percent, seven percent.
And some of that was Charlie had been with the village for a long time, you know?
I'm sorry?
Charlie had been with the village a long time and he had, I would think, a considerable salary, right? Isn't that...
Yeah, but you gotta pay some money.
That certainly was a piece of it.
And, and we've reduced that.
Expenses are, are driven down, that's...
Right, and, let me...
To me, it's, you've gotta drive revenue up. Last year, there was significant improvements in the facility. We were grateful recipients of a, of a ten thousand dollar grant that got a lot of cool work done. We have a, a sprinkler system that's functional now and it's the first time it's been functional in a long time. Let's, and, and so now we have a facility that should be able to draw more revenue. We need to draw more revenue.
So in other words, you're saying that there's a correlation? In other words, if we didn't have expenses being driven down, then would it match what you originally thought would happen as far as membership and participation and revenue?
No, I wouldn't say that because we've driven revenues down like we'd hoped. The revenue has, the revenue has not, the expenses.
Okay.
The revenue has not been driven up. Now, it has stayed relatively flat, if you look at the last five, six years, the graph is something like this. So we're almost, in one sense, yeah, we didn't reach our expectations, there's no, you, I told Yvonne and Matt at home in our meeting when we talked about it, I said, it's sad that we didn't get what we wanted. But again, seven of our nine greens were blocked by trees for the last several years. We've gotten that down, we feel, again, good, humbled, but good that we're at thirty-two thousand. We're gonna get close to breaking even this year.
Right.
So, so expense-wise, the village has been doing much better with it for many years before. We've got, we've made it even better. Revenue-wise, we've kinda, at least we're holding, and we hope now.
And to be clear, I don't look at that as a reflection of your ability because all golf courses, it seemed to be suffering from the same, same situation. Um, where, where are we gonna go from here?
Contract write-down for SUGS Incorporated is thirty-two thousand dollars, right?
Yep.
Okay, last year was what?
Um...
Same, the contract.
Same, same.
Same, okay.
And we paid our expenses outside of it.
Outside of that.
So we had, what, forty-three thousand roughly in expenses last year.
And forty-three thousand plus the thirty-two?
No.
Forty-three, an extra eleven?
Correct.
Okay, so right now, it's a thirty-two for that, whatever expenses come to the...
Right, we're, we're trying to keep that a total cost.
Gotcha, okay. So with the expenses, that could be in the area of about eight thousand dollars. It's not, so the portlet wasn't even a big deal or that thousand dollar fuel thing wasn't a big deal. The expenses are the biggest deal, right? Fertilizers, that kinda stuff?
Expenses, all the things, so are there the biggest expenses?
Yeah, no, that, that's, yeah, I would correct you there, Greg. The way we're looking at it is we think we can run the golf course outside all of our company's expenses for eight thousand. So if we add a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred or five hundred, you see, that's about a ten, twenty percent increase in the expenses for us. But I am not concerned about that thousand dollars.
No, but I, I understand all that. I, I, I see where things are going, but I, I'm trying to figure out, these four things that you're looking for, how, how is it gonna affect us if he, if we add those things to that? Does it put us in a mode where, hey, we could spend an extra ten thousand dollars like we did last year, eleven thousand?
Well, first of all, that, that can't happen.
Exactly.
So if, if we get to that point, we will, it can't happen.
Right.
We don't have appropriation. So, you know, I'm specifically to fuck the other areas, um, you know, if we're not gonna add an additional money, uh, you know, we'll review the expenses with him if we want that stated.
Right, no.
So if he wants to go back and state these things in there, we can do it if he feels...
Well, what, what do you guys feel about this? I mean, right now, we're gonna be talking, okay? What, what do you feel about this, plan?
Um, I'm not inclined to pay additional money for fuel. Um, I think that if I was running something, I, I think that he does not, Joel does not have a comfort factor with, um, expenses that could come to him that he did not fill out a requisition for or he didn't make the initial deal. And I, I, I get that and I wanna, I'm not sure how to work through that. I, I think he's saying, I'm okay to take three payments on the portlets, but anything beyond that, the village or Malloy's because somebody's using the picnic grove or whatever and, and shares in some of that, he's saying, I, I can handle eight thou- thousand dollars of expense and within that, I, cap me at three, everything else is beyond, beyond that, it is on you. I'm, I'm fine with that. And if he doesn't make daily deposits, I'm fine with that as long as he's, we're, we're within the bounds of good, uh, deposit management.
Right, here, here's my problem, I, I deal with contracts all the time. If he's a subcontractor and your, your subcontracting amount is thirty-two thousand dollars and that's supposed to include all the expenses, then that's, that's what it's supposed to include. And he really should be purchasing it, but I know Green Hills is purchasing it. That's where I, I have a problem. But it's probably best if you guys purchase it, right, as opposed to him? I mean, what, what if we give him the amount that he gets and he purchases what, what's needed out of that thirty-two? I mean, that's why I usually do it with our, our subcontractor, is there something wrong with that?
I'd have to think that out, um, I'd have to give that some thought. So to give him the whole thirty-two and he do all the purchasing, you know?
And then that's it. If, if you're saying thirty-two is up as our budget, here, you take this thirty-two and whatever you do with it, you, if it's...
Okay, well, but we do have, we have utilities, those are not gonna come on a requisition. Those are an unknown.
Right.
And they have property insurance.
Okay.
Uh, you know, there are gonna be items that if, if we're gonna, we better go back and rethink this because if, that could mean more money going there and that's more money we don't have.
Gotcha, so there's other things that's involved, okay.
Not another area to take that from. So there, there are, there are going to be some unknowns. Something, heaven forbid, could happen to the golf shack or something that we have to fix. We're sitting here, we don't know about it, maybe another mower's gonna break down. We're just, we don't know, but we're not in a position to take those hits, unfortunately. And I, I mean, that was the same part when we sat down to talk about the contract, that we, we couldn't really go there. That was the best we could offer was to try to share those expenses and, and pay them as much as we could.
Okay, I understand.
I, I would caution us against having it.
What do you think, Mel?
I was with you on the same point about if this is what it is, he gets the money and then he pays the bills. Um, except I do understand why the village needs to pay some of it and some of it, uh, simple stuff is, uh, we're tax exempt, he's not.
Yeah.
Um, so us paying the bills, the bills are lower than if he took on the expense of it himself, himself.
Right, right.
Um, maybe optimizing those items that are unknown, just listing them, just so he knows what the unknown is. Like electricity is included in the bill, um, not stating the amount, just that it is. And, I mean, it, you can see the bills kinda thing, but I, I let him wanting the three port, three months of portlet, I understand it, cause that way you know. I mean, it might be an unknown expense if the rumpkey bill goes up or if it's all sudden, we do get a boom in participation... get a boom in participation, and so instead of getting it emptied once every other week, it now has to be emptied twice a week, that would increase the cost, but my guess is if that went up, the revenue went up as well, so that's a, a good thing.
Mm-hmm, right.
And then charging some of the portlet to Malloy's makes sense to me, because part of the reason we have the portlets is Malloy's doesn't want the golfers going into our own bathroom.
I don't know if that makes him Malloy's responsibility.
No, but, I mean, there are bathrooms.
You know what, they're leasing it, they're a business.
Yeah, exactly, but.
I, I don't see any reason that they, the portlet cost should go to.
But if it's there for the whole season, so, so do you want all of the port, you're saying that all the port, the whole time the portlets are there, it should be charged to the golf course, or?
And they should only be there for three months, but I don't see how that cost or expenditure has.
I said Malloy's and what I really meant to say was the picnic grove.
Right, which is the pool, that would be more the pool than, than Malloy's everything.
Who, I don't know what the picnic grove is charged to, I thought it was Malloy's that rented it out, sometimes.
It's, it's separate from the village.
It's the village.
I, I mean, I'm just.
And you need the portlets there for a longer season of picnic.
Right, and I, I thought the golf season was longer than three months, I know the pool season is relatively short, but I thought golf was March through October.
My assumption is, if the golf season's longer than three months, it better be with, because that takes.
March to October.
You get my swing. That they would pick up three months of a six-month season and other.
Or split it, or somehow, say someone gets charged.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't wanna get down to a pro rating toilet paper and a, I mean, I think we gotta stop at some level.
Right. I think listing in the con, or not in the contract, but maybe just in a side note saying, these are the expenses that could be included, because, I mean, if all of a sudden we decide.
Well, and again, I, I mean, you don't have a copy of the contract in front of you, but I feel we did list the categories, and I, I think we've had some more in-depth costs and, I mean, you certainly know you listed out the different expenses that are associated with it and we reviewed, reviewed those, so, you know, it's, it is actually stated on the front page, the breakdown. And then Joel's aware of, he's done a good breakdown here on the different years and different kind of expenses, if that gives you feel for it.
See, and it, it helps to know, I, I thought we had a signed contract and now these were revisions, but that's not the case.
And then what, what was the difference between twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, the expensive being seventeen to nine? Was there something?
I pulled that right out of my.
Was it, was there something big though, Yvonne?
Well, I know that there was some.
Some of it was capital action. No, oh, you mean the bottom line expenses? Well, it's all on this sheet, I think that's the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it was all expected, it was understood, it was very well thought through. But we think we can keep it around eight or ten this year.
One thing, just on the side, I think maybe we should talk about at the retreat, as we deal with a tight financial situation, how are we going to address that? What are we gonna have to do to deal with a tough situation? And we're gonna have to start to prioritize what, what happens and what doesn't happen in the village. We're gonna have to face that earlier rather than later.
I mean.
I feel like we do that every time, almost.
No, I'm thinking, I'm thinking bigger.
I know, I know what you're.
So, is there a reason to have the expenses in the contract instead of decreasing the dollar amount and having the expenses outside the contract? I mean, was it just?
Yeah, because it helps our, you know, if he, if Joel requisitions twenty-five thousand dollars worth of stuff and it's outside the contract, then we have to pay it.
But he would, at that, if it was outside the contract, he could request Yvonne to requisition it and then Yvonne would have to requisition it, it would be an, right? Is that? So if these?
Yeah, and again, I think, I think the thought of putting it all together was, was so we would have that ultimate cap. If we have an amount for a contract, and then we have an additional pot of money and our expenses went way up, we're still, the bottom line, we're still owing that full amount of that contract. And, and that's, that's the unevenness we can't confront anymore, so I think our only safe way is to have it all combined and, yes, if, if it's a bad year, it's going to mean less for them, but we, we don't have another pot of money to take it from, is the bottom line, so it's kinda that or nothing.
Okay.
I mean, it, it would all go away if we had a bunch of money sitting on the side.
Right. And, well, if it went over right now, you couldn't spend it without coming to us and doing this.
That's correct.
Are you, are you okay with capping the portlets at three months, getting charged to the golf course?
Yeah, I think so, I thought we.
Okay, so, we're okay on deposits, we're okay on the thousand dollars, we're okay on three?
No, we're not okay on the thousand dollars.
We're saying, we're all in agreement that it's not gonna be added in.
Yes, okay.
So we're okay on that issue of not including it.
Thank you.
Sorry, so the only piece left is, do we use the word approve or review, correct? For expenses, is that? Do we have consensus?
Mm-hmm.
Up till there?
I think it has to be approval, right? I mean, we would retain, we would retain the right to approve expenses.
The village.
The village.
There, when you say the right to approve them, you mean on the requisition side, or?
Well, there's even.
He's asking that he.
I think it needs to be reviewed.
Oh, approval from, from his standpoint.
Which is normally what we've done it, agreed to, is that we, the two of them would sit down and review those on a monthly basis before those charges are made.
Yeah. But like you said earlier, the approval, and I can see how I just messed that up, but the approval happens at the requisition, so that if he requisitions.
If he requisitioned something, I perceive that as he's approved it.
If it's signed and says, go ahead, that's approval, if he, if we say we can't do that, I would love to do.
If, if he rec, if he requisitions a new mower and Yvonne says no, it's already game over.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, does that make sense, or?
Um, that makes sense.
Wait, I mean, go ahead.
But then, so if we get a utility bill that's like twice what we thought it would be, a golf course, we still have to pay it from the golf course.
Cause he left the water on, continuously.
Yeah, hypothetically.
Okay.
If there wasn't a requisition involved, it's twice what he may have thought it was gonna be, but it, it is twice that and we would have to pay it from the golf.
Right. So it's gonna be, who's gonna be the shock absorber, basically? Right, and we, and we not having the funds to be much of a shock absorber.
Like the contract is for the full amount that we appropriated, so there isn't any.
This might seem ridiculous, but can we take an average and say, this is what we're willing to pay? I mean, it's the same thing, though, it's the same thing.
You know, what's interesting about this, if you guys talk so much and review so much, and that's what you talk about, actually reviewing once a month about the expenses, I don't understand what the problem would be as far as just taking what the thirty-two thousand in the first place. Well, you know, it's, we're having on the fuels, the expenses, the portlets and.
In fact, we have.
But it's, it's like if you're reviewing so much, you can always say yes or no to a lot of different things as you're talking every month.
But to Yvonne's point, there are things that are not controllable, you're not gonna requisition X amount of power per month or so much amount of water.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to figure out the power issue, but that's probably the lame thing.
Joel?
Yeah.
That's a good answer that.
Joel, I would think of water.
Because, because that was one of them that I asked him about, I said, yeah, I guess I was in there using it as an office a little more back in the spring, so that's why the electric went up, so I expect that. But, but to your question a few minutes ago, when you said, if we're just giving all this money, thirty-two thousand, to Suggs Properties, and that's it, what's really occurring here, and I think Glenn would know this four-letter word better than any of us, R.I.S.K.
Yeah, who has the business?
The shift in risk has totally gone out of the village. And totally transferred onto Suggs Properties as a concerned citizen running this company for the village golf course. So, that's R.I.S.K., which is pretty wild. And, and I mentioned that to Matt and Yvonne, and I said, I would hope that if there's some really, really weird thing, I don't know if we use really weird in the country, but really weird thing, like there's some big blow, she says, oh, yeah, Joel, we'll just deal with it as equitably as we can. And I understand that. And I said to them in our meeting, I said, so you're saying the village does not want to spend more than thirty-two thousand dollars on the golf course total this year? And they said, yeah, and I said, I understand, that sounds very good to me as a citizen. And we are essentially taking the risk, we cannot spend a penny on the golf course, but obviously we think that would hurt our revenue. So we're the deciders here, y'all have decided on thirty-two thousand, not a penny more, and we're bringing to that the risk. So that's why your question was so good.
So, given you saying that, it seems like review, because you're requisitioning most of your expenses.
Yeah, sure.
It, it seems to me reviews appropriate and rather than approve, and if you have concern, if, if something comes up out of the ordinary, I would expect you to go to the manager and Matt and say.
But, you know, to be fair, I, I know that, I see it happen all the time with corporations, and even with the best of intentions, if I got a pot of money, I've seen it done, it's like, I've got thirty-two thousand to play with or to, to work with. And so if it's sitting on our side of the fence and we're guarding it, that could be a different outcome, not to reflect whoever the contractor is, versus I've got thirty-two thousand to work with and I'm gonna do this, this and this, where we could go through a summer possibly and end up with, if it was on our side of it, a pool of extra money that wasn't spent because it wasn't in, in your budget and in your control, is that, does that make sense?